Call the order of the city council meetings for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 is now five o'clock. The city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapel?
Here.
Council members Clarence Vetter?
Here.
Dale Holmes?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark DeMers?
Present.
Brian Larson?
Here.
Mr. McCormick, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action, we defer to staff, boards, and commissions for research and future council agendas appropriate. I know that we have a couple of people that want to speak. If you want to come forth and just state your name.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
My name is Nathan Foster.
You can take your mask off. You can take it off so you can talk.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Foster. I'm with the Mindac Titans. We are a brand-new semi-pro football team. We're looking to make our home here in the East Grand Forks. We've already nailed down a high school to play at. We will be playing at the East Grand Forks Senior High. And right now, we are looking to kind of branch out a little bit, get involved with community a little bit more, reach out with the city council on new opportunities to encourage volunteerism and community, and also go ahead and go over our mission statement. Our mission statement is, "The purpose of Mindac Titans semi-pro football team shall be to promote football and cheerleading in the Grand Cities area, and to further promote the development of leadership, character, sportsmanship, tolerance, discipline, and athletic ability, and to nurture fitness, volunteerism, a lifelong love of sports, and shall serve as the central feeder system to the Mindac Titans football team and football cheerleading programs." And basically, what we're talking about is just, we want to give men and women the opportunity to kind of relive their high school dream of playing football. And I know, I understand a lot of guys out here, they don't really get that opportunity, whether it's college or any other aspect. So with that said, we've been doing it for a while now, but we wanted to kind of like start anew. We are also a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We are a board ran organization with nine board members. We are really excited to be here. We are really excited to be in front of you guys, with you guys. And we are also hoping to create relationships with not just the city council, but also the businesses here in town. We want to give the city a nice little summer retreat where we give some entertainment, not just through football, but also through like halftime shows, eatery, that kind of thing. And again, I'm really excited. It's a summer league. We start in May, so very close coming up here, and we generally end in middle of August, so just before the fall. We are part of the Northern Elite Football League. Another big team there is the Fargo Invaders. They will be our first game, so we're hoping to kind of show that East Grand Forks can compete. And yeah, so going from there, I would also like to introduce our secretary and consultant. This is Gerald Anton and his wife, who is also our director of finances. This is Michelle Anton. So I'll go ahead and have Nova step up and kind of like introduce himself and tell a little bit about our experiences in semi-pro.
President Foster, appreciate that. Thank you. Board, how we doing today?
Good.
Yeah, living the dream, right? Thanks for having us come out here to have the opportunity to be a part of East Grand Forks. For as long as I've lived here, I've lived for about seven years. Currently, I'm a freight coordinator at Britain Transport. After the first year, met Michelle, and I've stuck around here. But ever since I've been here, I've played semi-pro football, got involved with the semi-pro team that was in Grand Forks. After the second year, I was the promoter/marketer. And then a couple of years after that, Michelle and myself, then as fiancés or as business partners, bought the Tri-City team over in Grand Forks, just with the different market. Eventually, over time, we knew we wanted to rebrand, because the Tri-City part, even though we had championships and we're winning football games, didn't make sense to the community as far as what Tri-City meant. You know, we were trying to sell the whole Kirkston, East Grand Forks, Grand Forks piece, but it really just didn't work out. So with us having the baby, we knew we didn't have the time to run the business anymore, so we wanted to help grow the company into a board system, where President Foster has been the head coach. Actually, he's been a player since year one here in the local area. Champion, what, a two-time champion?
Yes, sir.
A two-time champion as a player, and then as a coach, as the head coach, he was the, another two-time back-to-back champion. So to have him in that spot's really resourceful. I just wanted to go ahead and show this quick video. I'm not sure if you guys can see it, but this is kind of part of our social media presence that we do have. Do you mind if I step a little closer? Okay. Our social media, we're on Facebook, so you can go on and you see on the back of the team logos, where you go on there and see our flyers, our schedules. We have a really good website called Boating.Mboard that has all the board members on there, and you can go there and you can click on a lot of things. You can get to know us and see a lot of us are writers from this area, but we've worked together for years now. And this is just a little video that we put together. And we're normally in, at the UNHPC center practicing, but because of COVID, we had a rest facility in Fargo. And so this is our combine, and we have about three weeks ago for tryouts. So this is also our schedule. Awesome experience, great group of guys.
We couldn't be more excited to bring the Titans football team to East Grand Forks. Our goal is to bring a championship contender as well as a family-sized, fun experience complete with training and entertainment.
And you can kind of watch that video on our social media. That's all I really have at this time. I just want to let you know, there's resources out there. You can get to know us. We really want to be part of the community. And really, we feel like this market is more sustainable than in Grand Forks, because there isn't that bigger football team that we're compared to every day. You know, these are guys that just want to have fun and be part of what's going around us, so hopefully we have an opportunity to do that.
Hey, I thought that our champion team was going to be the Vikings, but maybe it'll be you guys.
Yes, yeah. We definitely want to get that going, for sure. Right now, we've always been in our character to really let our actions speak louder than our words. So we just have a scrimmage this Saturday, and we have a game against Fargo, which I'd like to really start the I-29 Bowl. You know, there's no reason why they shouldn't be bringing a group of people over here. We make a whole day out of it. We do the same thing over there. We just have that rivalry, you know, and just really eat it up. We just have to get other people on board and keep getting involved. But I'll quit running my mouth and introduce my wife, Michelle, here, so she can do her thing.
Hi, I'm Michelle Anton. Let me take off my mask. Another thing that is really great about our organization is that we are very family-friendly. So we look for halftime shows that involve the families, like we do kid obstacles. We bring out, one year we brought Sea Lot, and the little kids did a local performance we really need. And then... The nice thing that we like about the East Grand Forks community is that a lot of the restaurants, well, I think all the restaurants here are family-friendly, so we don't really have to pay... You can choose here. We can just figure out a post-game location and then invite the away team and then our team, as well as their families. So that's one thing that we're really big on is family-friendly.
Eric Johnson?
I just thank you guys for coming out. Just noticed that you're using the UNHPC. If there was potentially a facility in East Grand Forks that were to open, is that, would that be something that you guys would be interested in renting as well, or?
That would be probably our go-to. Like I said before, like, we're looking to make this home. So if we're on this side of the river 99% of the time, we are perfectly content. I told that, the same thing to the activities director at the high school. And if we were able to get like an indoor facility so we could practice during the winter, that would be absolutely perfect, especially if it's a lot more cost-effective than, say, the UNHPC. We also have a director who is heavily involved in the community here. His name is Mike Peterson. I don't know if you guys know Mike Peterson at all, but he's advocated for the indoor facility. From my understanding, he's always talking about it. He's always saying, he's like writing letters. And he's also been such a huge influence on us picking East Grand Forks as a spot, because he believes in it so much. But yeah, that's kind of what we're going for, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. There are actually quite a few people that do watch our council meetings and that, so if you wanted to say what night of the week and what time the games are in this year?
Absolutely. So our first home game will be at four o'clock, and then every game after that will be at three o'clock at the East Grand Forks. And I believe I could pull up our schedule. Actually, the schedule should be on the... Yep, yep.
Every Saturday in the summer?
Yep, yep. We have five home games and five away. Like I said, we'll be playing teams from Fargo, from the cities, from Bismarck. Like you said, we are playing, we're scrimmaging Bismarck this weekend, so we're really excited for that. So our number-one goal is to just be competitive, add a family-friendly event for the entire community, and also be involved in the community. Volunteerism is our biggest go-to this year. Me personally, I've already done, whether it's here or outside town, I've already done two. I volunteered for two youth football camps, one in Alexandria, one in Fargo recently. So that's a big thing, just kind of like being a light in those kids' lives. Next Monday, we will be visiting a center to just, there's kids at this one group home that just love the idea of being around football players. So I have a group of football players. We're going to be delivering signed footballs, and we're just going to be hanging out with them for a little bit. In the past, we've done like Toys for Tots, that kind of thing. So that's a really, really big goal. Eventually, someday, once we have our funding up, I'd like to be able to start funding a youth, like a Tiny Titans team. So again, like, to us, it's all about the kids and give them like an escape during the summer. So if there's any other questions, we'd love to answer.
Yep.
I'd like to just say I've been very fortunate to be with these guys when they were the Tri-City North Stars. I hauled them, and I've seen them play. Very professional, very well-mannered. I kind of see them as a great asset to East Grand Forks. I think it's going to be a big deal for us, and I hope we can make everything and help you out as much as we can to make you welcome, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, and that's probably our number-one compliment we receive wherever we go, is our organization. I've mentioned this, as a head coach, this is me coming from, as a head coach and as a player, my goal is always to run the team as close to a college program as possible. I've played college ball, I've played professional indoor football before, and I've seen that side of it. So we're selling an experience for our players. They get a football experience. They get everything. They get the games, they get the jerseys, they get practices, they get film. So that's our priority when it comes to that. So everybody gets what they pay for. But again, like, we try to run it as legitimately as possible. And any venue that we can get to further legitimize our spot here at East Grand Forks as a football team, we are willing to work for it. I would say this, though, funding has been hard to receive, because sponsors, as you know, dealing with COVID, have been hard to get. So if we are able to get any kind of grant opportunities, we'd be more than willing to work with that. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Your first game is, first game is May 8th, right?
May 1st in Fargo.
No, but I meant home game, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. First home game is May 8th, four o'clock, East Grand Forks High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Move on to approval of minutes. Consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting for the East Grand Forks, Minnesota City Council of March 16th, 2021. Did you want to need to speak, sir? Is it on the agenda? Okay. Sorry about that. State your name and address, please.
Bruce Friskel, 1522 10th Street, Southeast. And as a concerned, lifelong resident of East Grand Forks, I'm concerned about a proposed asphalt plant that's going to be located less than a mile from our schools. This asphalt plant, the emissions is what I'm concerned about. It's on the riverbank. It's three miles upstream from our drinking water. What I'm concerned about is the hydrocarbons. I don't know how you control hydrocarbons. They're recognized carcinogenics by the CDC, OSHA, and American Cancer Society. My concern is that these, they're vapors, and vapors travel a long ways. Fog, which is actually coarser than a vapor, will travel three miles in a three-mile-an-hour wind. Temperature inversion, when the layers of air stratify, you have cold air at the bottom, those vapors will even travel even further. I think it'd be prudent of the city council to pay attention to this. And if you have any questions or comments or suggestions, pass them on to zoning in the township. Also, I'm concerned how it'll impact the expansion of East Grand Forks in that direction. The area where they're proposing it is now a zone to agriculture. If they're going to change the zoning, they're kind of moving the goalpost on some of these people. Is our city moving out to agricultural, out to industrial, or is industrial moving into our city? And how about the people who buy lots? When this plant is running, they will not have any say in the matter. So I just want, I think it'd be prudent if the city council weighs in on that with the county and the township. Comments that a few people have?
Thought to the county commissioners and been to the meetings?
Yep, yep. And as a landowner in Huntsville Township, I have other issues, but I'm just keeping these to the issues of me being a citizen of East Grand Forks.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm David Thorfensen. My address, my home address is 188-98-424th Avenue Southwest. I live right across the river from the proposed plant. I was hesitant to come in because I live in the country, but I also have, I've been a dentist in town here for 33 years. I have my own building that uses city water. I also own a house on 625 12th Avenue, or 12th Street Northwest. So even though I live in the country, I do have a vested interest in the city of East Grand Forks. The things that worry me the most are the toxic fumes that come out of an asphalt plant, arsenic, formaldehyde. I don't know if you guys have ever been associated with formaldehyde at all, but it seeps into even your pores of your body. When I was in dental school, going through gross anatomy, I always thought it was a joke, because the upperclassmen could say, "You must be a freshman, because you smell like a cadaver." And as I went up and I was a senior, I could pick out a freshman like that. I mean, it gets into your clothes, it gets into your fabric of your house. The... It just, there's nothing about this plant that could be beneficial to our neighborhood. And again, it's less than a while from the middle school and the elementary school, where there are football fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, things like that, that'll be running during the summer. The amount of traffic, I think there's four bus routes that turn off of Highway 2 and then come down to 220 to the middle schools. The proposed traffic for this plant is 20 trucks per hour, and the plant will run from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, six days a week. And we look at the safety with our school buses. We look at safety with, excuse me, harvest season, as like, well, with this year, I'm not a farmer, but I'm thinking that the wheat's going to come off the field pretty stinking early. And so we have all of that traffic with the farmers, with their big trucks, plus we have to deal with 20 trucks an hour coming in and out of the proposed plant. It's a safety issue. It's a health issue. It's a personal nuisance having an asphalt plant run from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night with a concrete crusher. And I can hear traffic out on Highway 2 when trucks go out there. And this is going to be less than a quarter mile from my house. And so I thank you for the opportunity, and I would encourage that if the city could give any input to the possible detrimental effects to, especially the water supply, our middle school and elementary school, I would really appreciate that the council would maybe voice some of those concerns with this project. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Ellis Austin. I've been a resident in town here for 41 years. Before I get into my issue with the traffic circle, I agree with these two gentlemen on this asphalt. I didn't come to talk about that, I didn't even thought of it, but I 100% agree with their points. So...
Sir, are you coming to speak on the roundabout?
Yes.
And that's on the agenda, so if you want to wait till we get to that agenda item, then you can speak then, sir?
Oh, I can do that.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else need to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
I'm John Miro. I'm from rural East Grand Forks. I'd be directly right behind the river where the proposed asphalt plant that they want to set up. And I don't want to repeat myself and our concerns. What I feel is that the city has some direct concerns, and one of them is, I don't know if you guys got a plot plan of their site. I think it got sent to you guys. But if you look at the infiltration water and you look at the flood zone, it appears to be about 30 yards. So I got direct concerns with water contamination. I met with John Zavro, and I said, "Where's your wastewater, your contamination pond?" And he goes, "Oh, that's going to be way up by Simplot, up by the highway." And I go, "It's not on the plot, huh?" I live on the river, I fish the river, I swim the river. I own a lake, but I'm at the river all the time. It's probably my biggest enjoyment out there. We got people that pull water from the river. I think the winery does, maybe, for some of his watering. I am really worried about contamination. There's no impact study done. So I go back to Zavro, I go, "Well, how do you, how do you get by with no studies? Have you contacted the Red Lake Water System?" No, we don't have to. We just have to meet the state requirements. Okay. What happened with state requirements is they'll just come in and fine you if you do something wrong until you get it right. You could do something wrong for years and just pay the fine. Damage is already done. You got contaminated water going north to East Grand Forks. You're selling water to Grand Forks. You know, it's got to be a real concern of yours. And I'm not asking to shut this thing down. I'm asking for a stay. I don't know if you could make a recommendation. They're pushing their meeting on Friday. It only gave us maybe not even two months to prepare. I'm sure they've been working on it for years. Until some kind of an impact study is going to be done, there's pollution control, smell, dust, everything else involved with it. I'm worried about water contamination. So that's why I'm here, to see if you guys would ever consider looking at that and making some kind of a recommendation. I think it'd be for the benefit of East Grand Forks and Grand Forks.
Thank you, sir.
Johnny?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything to speak to the council on that's not on the agenda?
I also live across from the proposed asphalt plant site. My name is Jeff Heath, 42347 190th Street, Southwest. I just reiterate all these, what all these other people have said. I mean, nothing good will come of this. I don't want to see a temporary permit. I don't want, I don't want it there at all. If the council could make a recommendation that, you know, there is a lot of East Grand Forks residents that live within a mile of this proposed site. I don't know if, you know, I brought it up to some of them. It's just not a good thing. I just, we're asking for a little help. That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Sure.
But as far as this temporary or interim permit, what the company is asking for is an interim permit, but it's for 10 years. I talked to an environmental attorney down in St. Cloud, and he said, "Well, that's a temporary term, permit." And I said, "Yeah, but they want it for 10 years." And he laughed at me. Said, "There's no such thing as a temporary permit for 10 years. If you get a permit for 10 years, it's there forever." So I just wanted to add that in. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Appreciate everybody speaking, bringing that, your comments to us. So thank you so much. Sorry, I'll move back to approval of minutes for considering approving the minutes of the regular meeting for the East Grand Forks, City Council of March 16th, 2021. Move. Moved. Mr. Helms? Second. By re-appel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vetter?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
DeMers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bidlet innings, there is none. Scheduled public hearing, there is none. Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion in action if they choose. Any members like 2 through 4 polled at all? If not, I would entertain a motion of 2 through 4, please.
Move 2 through 4.
By re-appel, sending...
Second.
Second by Mr. Helms. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Vetter?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
DeMers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Knowledge of receipt of reports of officers, boards, and commissions. Regular meeting minutes of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for March 17th, 2021. Communication, there is none. Old business, there is none. Move on to new business. Consider adopting resolution number 21-04-28, accepting and awarding the bid for... awarding the bid for improvements for the twenty twenty city project number four, street and ADA improvements to op construction for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Move.
By reappell?
Second.
Seconded by Larson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kay? Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving the mutual aid agreements between the City of East Grand Forks and Alvarado Fire and Rescue Services and Warren Fire and Rescue Services.
Move.
Seconded by reappell. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving a special event application for a senior high school with the authorization to closure of the parking lot by Restaurant Row on the evening of Saturday, May eighth.
Move.
By reappell.
Seconded by Helms.
Any questions or discussion?
I will just add that this is weather permitting. If the weather is bad, there won't be a closure.
Thank you. I think this is, I see what they're trying to do. I think it's a great idea. Just wondering if, I'm assuming they've talked to the property owners to verify that they wanted to, or they were fine with the parking being used for that?
I asked them, are you talking about the restaurants down there?
Yes.
I asked them to contact all the managers of all the restaurants so they are aware that this would be taking place.
Okay. I just, I mean, to me, it seems like it's a good idea. They'd probably maybe even go and use those restaurants. But like I said, I just wanna make sure that they're aware of it and that.
Yep, Restaurant Row will be contacted, and then we'll make sure that we have staff paying attention. Like I said, it should only be about an hour, and then we can have staff pull the barricades immediately.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
They will be utilizing one of the restaurants.
They will be using, okay. And like I said, if you're gonna use it, you usually have to block it off for a while before there, so you don't have a bunch of cars there. So I'm just thinking, let's just make sure everybody's.
We'll probably block it off after the lunch rush.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving and moving forward with twenty twenty project. Please insert which project you would want that in your motion, and we'll go from there.
I would move that we move forward with the roundabout.
Better has made the motion to use, move forward with the roundabout construction for the project of the twenty twenty-two federal project. Is there a second?
I'll second this motion.
Seconded by Mr. Demers. Any questions or discussion, Mr. Mayor?
I do have a concern making a commitment to go forward with a project like this when we still have the questions we have about property acquisition. To go ahead and not know these costs and really commit this close to a million dollars in federal money to this project, and then the time will pass, and we will have nothing else on the long-range plan or the tip. Now we're bound to do the project at whatever cost they ask. And so I have a very strong concern about this being the only qualifying project for those federal dollars, especially as the days click off and that door closes to maybe add something else to the list of potential projects. No different than I would, I would have a problem committing to build a house on a lot that I did not own. And I start to build and then start to negotiate to buy the lot, and suddenly the seller of the lot holds all the cards. Not a good bargaining position. And it's not very courteous either, because the seller of the lot, and I haven't really come to terms on how to buy the lot, so it's not really very courteous to the lot owner either. And so I'm really reluctant to have us go ahead and commit to this being the only project on the, that would qualify for those federal dollars, and then the day passes where we could add another project. There may be an opportunity to put both projects into that plan. There may be that opportunity to put them both in. You'd have to show the funding for how you would cover the local share of, let's say it's Tenth. And then those two could ride along even further, and it wouldn't be wasted money. We would indeed be investing time, staff time, contractor time in our engineering, legal time in the, looking for, would we or would we not be able to assess along Tenth? But if we're gonna do it anyway, it's not wasted time, right? If these, if we feel these are both projects that are gonna happen, it's not wasted time. So I, for one, am just, between the courtesy to the neighbors that are there and the backwards bargaining position we end up in, I am not in favor of having this be the only project available for those federal dollars as of tonight's decision. I don't think it's a good strategic move.
Sir, did you wanna make your comments now?
My wife said, go to work, so I agree, line by line.
Restate your name and address, too, sir.
My name is Ellis Austin. I live at four thirty-four Greenwood Drive. I've been a resident out there for forty-one years. So I have a couple of questions for all of you, and if you wanna respond, fine, or if you don't, that's okay. Who agrees that pedestrian safety is important? Okay. So I did a little research. Minnesota DOT, this is not just some fly-by-night, this is a Minnesota DOT report on traffic circles in residential areas with high pedestrian traffic. And I didn't write down all the stats, and the safety factor goes up by approximately eight to ten percent into the negative. So your street, your traffic circle's gonna be, make that area for pedestrians less safe there, and for bicycles. So that's, and I, and as one of the gentlemen and I were talking, size and acquisition of property, size of something like that with all the bus traffic, the truck traffic, the safety vehicles, so during a very busy time, and we have a medical emergency or a fire south of town, and it's all bottlenecked up, right now, people can pull to the right, and they do. You get coming into that traffic circle, and you're gonna try get a fire engine through there and other safety equipment, the time is gonna be delayed, and there just ain't no two ways about it. So, and I am concerned about the size of it for our school buses. Now, I have one other question. Is that road there two-lane, one lane in each direction, or is it two lanes in each direction? Pretty simple question. It's one lane in each direction, correct? Okay? How come, and isn't passing on the right illegal? It is, but it is constant. When the traffic is heavy out there, it is constant passing on the right. And I'm gonna tell you, I do not do it. I think it's a public safety hazard, and we need to not do this traffic circle. We need to put in no passing on the right and get some law enforcement out there because it's a safety issue. And don't start giving tickets, because everybody out there's been doing it forever, so they think it's okay. So let's give some warnings, put in, out to the community that after this day, tickets are gonna be issued. Because it's four lanes, but it's supposed to be two. Now, having said that, I haven't seen the designs, but you got, you're not gonna avoid four lanes in each direction. It's gonna happen. And then you're gonna get to that traffic circle, and it's gonna be a bottleneck, and it's gonna slow down traffic. It is going to be a nightmare. Now, Mr. Gander had a very good point, so I'm gonna touch on that briefly. Ask yourself how you'd like if your home's value was destroyed to put in this roundabout. And if there's anyone on city council that would accept that fact, I got a hard time believing it. It'd be not in my neighborhood. You're going to ruin Orton's business, which is viable business. I'm glad we don't have a lot of businesses out there, but Orton's is nice. It's a good neighborhood business, and we're gonna destroy that. It's down the tubes. We have two residents, and I asked them to come today, that live on the other side of the road, and if there's a divider in there, they have to, are gonna either have to go into the traffic circle and come around and exit again to get into their own driveway, or they're gonna have to go around the block. It's plain and simple. There's, there is no way around it, and we're gonna ruin their property values. Doesn't affect my house, but it affects my community. And this thing is just a bad, bad idea. I believe two traffic lights. And so one city council member said to me, well, you're gonna stop traffic. Ding 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 ding. How are people, if you don't stop traffic, how are the people from the side streets gonna get on that street? The traffic circle is primarily gonna be running north to south and south to north. I don't know if you've been in many traffic circles. They're gonna enter that traffic circle as they're going south. The people that are trying to enter from the right, they're not gonna yield to them. If there's a gap, the people out there speed up when you're trying to get on the road. I mean, how inconsiderate can people be? But anyway, that's a fact. So as they shoot into that traffic circle, the, the traffic's never gonna stop when it's heavy traffic. It's just gonna be a freeway that you gotta make a little loop to get around it. How do you get the gap in the traffic to let people from the side roads enter? Traffic lights. Does it stop traffic? Darn right. And so I, I just don't understand it. Besides that, the last thing I'm gonna say, and, you know, we say we got federal money. And that mindset just irks me. But I know what happens all over the United States, and if we don't take it, all we're doing is cheating ourselves, but I wish that wasn't the way society thought. That federal money is my money. It's all you guys' money. Plain and simple. I mean, it can't be any clearer than that. So as being a responsible community, unless we have a project that is really viable to the expansion of the community, I would say we do the right thing and have a good conscience of not throwing away federal money 'cause we can. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions? And if you wanna go on Minnesota DOT website, there's statistics and a whole lot about that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure everybody's got the same emails that I've gotten. I got one today from one of the homeowners there. Not really happy with the fact that it's gonna hurt his property value, but the fact that.
Dale, can I say one other thing in regards to that? And Dale and I have dealt with these people, and you're talking about acquisition of property that hasn't been done yet? I'm gonna tell you a little secret. We all know who owns that open lot, the Lawns. And I'll guarantee you, a dollar to a dozen doughnuts, they're gonna choke the city, you're gonna do an eminent domain, and they're both attorneys, and they're gonna take you to court. They, they'll wanna sell it. But tell you what, by the time you get done buying it, you're gonna pay a premium above a premium. Okay, nothing like it.
The other thing they're concerned about is when you're, these cars are, they're sitting in their house in the evening watching TV, got all this traffic going around this roundabout, headlights shining in their living room and everything all night long. It's gonna be a problem. This is, I've said it all along, that this roundabout is not gonna solve the problem that's out there. I got the, I picked up a copy of the study that was done on this roundabout back in sixteen or seventeen, whenever they done it, and it says right in here on a, under the pros and cons, a stoplight provides slightly better AMP capacity than a roundabout. On the roundabout, it says, of course, slightly less AMP capacity than traffic light. A traffic light would provide pedestrian safety much better than a roundabout. You got a roundabout, you got, you got crosswalks in it, there's no lights or nothing like that. When you come into that roundabout, you don't know, you're, you're probably not even watching for pedestrians, you're watching for other traffic. It's just a bad spot to have a roundabout. I, I know roundabouts work, I've been through them myself. If it was a four-corner intersection, I maybe feel better about it. It's not. It's two corners we're dealing with, actually, one corner is we're dealing with, and then you get to Main Road. The roundabout is not gonna solve the problem. And I think we've been misleading people that it's going to, but the study right here says it. It's, a stoplight is less, how would I say it, less, provides slightly better AMP capacity than a roundabout, and a roundabout is slightly less than a peak capacity in the AM. I think it's wrong. I think we need to think about the neighbors out there, we need to think about the businesses out there. It's the only business they have out there. If that business is to close because of this, and I'm not saying it will or it won't, it's a possibility. If it did, my guess is they'll probably never have another business like that out there. And all those people are gonna have to drive all the way up to the north end to get a gallon of milk. I mean, it's just a wrong, wrong place for it. I don't know how much more I can say and convince and make everybody understand that. I just don't think this is a proper place. So I hope, I hope we can defeat this. Thank you.
I just wanna make sure, I did have a couple of phone calls today and a couple of emails, and I did talk to Brandon Basilou, president of the school board. One of our main discussions was what this provided as a city for safety for the schools. And at that location, there is not a safety feature for the schools, it's per se, because of the distance from it. You know, we talked about what they're providing in the next year here with the remodels of the parking lot for safety of their kids, and I think they are looking for the city to work with them on a different project out there that would benefit the city as a whole, plus the school system for. city as a whole plus the school system for the benefit of our children that cross Bigland and go up and down Bigland there. So especially on 13th. I just want to make sure that I did, let everybody know I did speak to him today.
President, if I might, my number one concern on Bigland is pedestrian safety at 13th. The only way you can get a child across the street safely is if the cars stop. The only reason the cars stop is for a red light or a stop sign or flashing red. And they won't allow a hawk system at an intersection, so we're not going to have it there. By process of elimination, and I may be the outlier, but we will gain better access for vehicles at 13th and pedestrian safety with a full signalized intersection at 13th. I can't bring it down any other way. And that is my number one concern. Every spring, every fall, when I see those little munchkins taking off across there, when I was out taking pictures for State of the City, which is Thursday, one of the local residents right on the corner came out and said, sometimes I have to close my window. Looking out for children crossing, I am so afraid for their safety at that intersection of 13th and Bigland. We need to do something. And all I can think of, and I've looked into it extensively, full signalized intersection, you got to stop the cars and let the kids go by. They're young kids. They can't make the quick decisions and the good judgment, the critical judgment needed, you know, to come across a roundabout, whatever it might be. So we gained some access, benefit, we gained some pedestrian safety. And 13th, a signal, I feel, and someone can try to keep convincing me I'm wrong, that's got to happen sooner than later.
Thank you, sir. I'll just move on with my comments. You know, again, I had a couple of phone calls today from people that live in that area. And to be honest with you, one of them called me to say, go ahead and do it. They were worried about what that would do to, as indicated, to Orton's, what that would do to the properties that are around that roundabout. And I get that we are looking, we need to be future-looking, looking down the road of our capacity of any intersection going to south with the growth that we'll hopefully experience and keep experiencing on the south end of East Grand Forks. I think, you know, maybe the benefit of that roundabout in that location is maybe going to be minor than, than what we are hoping for. I know that people that, I've reached out to a lot of people on the council. I'm sure there's people who've gotten phone calls from people who want it. I know we've received a couple of emails saying they want it, they're behind it. As you know, I live on the north end, but I'll tell you this. I, every day this school year, I have driven that thing in the AM and the PM at the peak times. And I have seen some issues, but I have not experienced a problem if I was coming off that road, back onto it. And I'm sure people have in the past and going forward they will too. But just seeing my experience, every day I have driven that at the same time, every day, out to South Point. So I myself will not vote for the roundabout. And I hope that we can come back and consider the 10th Street project. And we continue to plan with what we need to do for the future of the growth of East Grand Forks and the south end and also work with the school system to better our child's safety out there. So. Anybody else have anything? So the motion is second for the roundabout project to be put on for the 2022 federal project. Mr. Reapel, do you have something? Nope, okay. If no other questions, we'll go to a roll call.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
No.
Reapel?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
No.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Okay, move on to claims. Consider authorizing city minister of closure to issue payment and recon bills and payroll. Motion.
Oh, move.
By Reapel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thursday, 12:30, excuse me, 11:30, there will be the start of the meal for the State of the City at the Civic Center. And noon, the program will start. And so if you are able to be there, that's great. You should have already gotten tickets by now if you plan to be there. I think we're pretty close to capacity. And if, if there may be just a few seats left, if someone really wants to be there in person, it will be streamed. And so you can tune in at noon if you want to see it on the stream for State of the City. And I guess I'll say one more thing about the, the proposed roundabout on the south end. Let's keep in mind that as we bring the benefit to the greater number of citizens down there, we do know we have an access problem, particularly trying to turn left from the west side of Bigland in the morning. And as we, as we really work to bring this benefit, let's also be as mindful and as courteous to the adjacent properties as we can possibly be. I know we will do it. And this is where that really starts now in earnest if we go forward with this, is to connect with them and make sure that the alignment we choose and the features that we put in are as, to make it as, as good for that neighborhood as it can be. And, and we'll just go forward like that. And also to minimize any effect on that business. That is a very important business for that, that end of town. Thanks.
Mr. Better, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. In view of the comments made about the asphalt plant, I would hope that our mayor would pen a letter to the Hope County Planning and Zoning on behalf of the city, objecting to the location of that asphalt plant. I think that's the least that we can do to our neighbors out there and our citizens that are going to be just as close within Ward 1 to that asphalt plant also. Then I would also ask that we approach MPO and ask for a study in our industrial park to decide and hold public hearings on what we need to do out there to improve our industrial park. So it isn't just one person saying, we're going to do this street. It's going to be a concerted effort that gathers all the input and comes up with a reasonable solution for that industrial park. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes.
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Reapel.
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing. He said nothing.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just after having conversations with a couple of staff members and then, you know, with some of the questions about ordinances that we had at the last week's West, work session, maybe this is a topic we could bring up at the next work session. But I feel like we should, as a council, as different departments and different, different groups, start going over and reviewing the existing ordinances for, for making sure that they're, they're intrinsically connected, I guess, you know, that, that we don't have, in the same light that we did the charter, right? I don't think it needs to be a charter organization thing, but I think we need to look through, see if they're relevant, see if they're, I guess, if they, if they still hold on to their meaning. I think there's certain ordinances that obviously lend themselves to the, the different commissions and we could assign all of those out. But there might be some that, you know, the animal ordinances, I don't know if they would go to the park or park and rec or if they go into, if we should just address them as a council. But I think we should have a review of our ordinances on par with what we did with the charter. And like I said, that doesn't need to happen today or tomorrow or anything, but I just think that that's the next logical step. Thank you.
Good chairperson for you. Mr. Larson.
Nothing tonight.
I do not have anything. Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Goldstead?
I have nothing unless there's questions for me.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing additional.
Anything from the department heads? In chambers or on? I see none. entertaining motion adjourned?
Move.
Second by Larson. All in favor, say aye. Close, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned. That's what I was thinking.